Good evening, I'd like to open the meeting of Deerfield Planning Board, November 6th, 2017, at about 7:00 at Deerfield Town Hall. The agenda tonight is to review minutes of previous meetings, review the mail, take some public comment. We have some old business, which is about the solar project up on 901 River Road, and an update on the plans for ideal storage along Route 5 and 10. Then we have some new business in A&R for the Fisher property at 555 River Road. We'll hear about the MVP grant. And we have a letter from the University of Massachusetts about that, and I hope our town administrator will be here for that part of the meeting. And then we'll, uh, we need to talk about our schedule for FY '19, including our budgets and our budgets. And then the other items, we'll discuss staffing needs of the planning board, housing, the affordable senior housing, anything going on there. Then any other business not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours prior to the posting of this meeting. We'll set a date for the next meeting and adjourn. Any additions, comments about the agenda? Nope. So, do we have a, um, the minutes from the last meeting? We have a forum. Roger, John and John are here. Rachel sent me an email last week saying she's got to be out of town.
Yeah, I ended up working out of town last month, last minute, that's, uh...
So we have minutes from the October 2nd?
Yes.
What's that?
The minutes from the October meeting?
I'll read them, but I can't vote.
I'll be on?
Or maybe I have them already.
Thanks.
Yeah, I have them already.
Well, that's a pretty smooth meeting, huh?
Yeah.
Any motion?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of October 2nd, 2017.
My second? All those, uh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proves abstain.
Abstain.
Roger and John are here.
302.
Excellent, is there any public comments? That's not gonna be discussed tonight. Looks like we don't have many people in the public, so we'll go past that, save the mail to the end. I keep asking her to put that behind that. Do you, um, are you here for A&R?
The A&R, yes.
Uh, Fisher, 555 River Road?
Yes.
All right, what if we do that one first?
Fine.
Because actually, these other ones, I wouldn't mind waiting for, um, Wendy, I think she must be in one of these other meetings. I think she might come out.
She was in the personnel meeting, but they're broken, so...
Yeah, so, all right, but if it's all right, everybody will look at the A&R.
I don't need, rather than having him sit for...
I know he wants to hear about the ideal storage and everything else, but... All right, um, so I have a application. Michael Fisher, um, uh, and the parcel is 555 River Road, MAP 66 lot 2, RA District. Um, there's one parcel, he wants to make it into three, so create lots 1 and 2 out of a larger parcel. Um, he's paid, uh, actually, we're supposed to get a check tonight, because they...
I should give you a check for $200?
Yeah, they weren't sure the other day.
I'll get the sign my lard, thank you, please.
Yep, because the application fee's $100, and every new lot is $50, so...
You have those, you can pass around, John?
Yeah, I'm just checking to make sure that we got the, uh, this was stamped and everything, so, and we got that. We have the disc. All right, you wanna come and just give us a little rundown of what you're doing? You can, sometimes it's easier to just point at the...
I'd be happy to.
You're Michael?
I am Michael.
Thank you. Sometimes they're more straightforward than others.
This one looks pretty straightforward.
So we're on River Road?
We're on River Road, about halfway between the Sunderland Bridge and the Deerfield River Bridge. Allen's land is here.
So this is the, so the river, the, yeah...
River is here.
Can I, so you're on the other side?
Right, this is APR land.
Oh, okay. All right, so we've got this whole thing, and you wanna...
And the farm, old farmhouse is here, and we're keeping a large pot for now of that, and running those two lots.
So the new lines would be this one and this?
Yep, that's...
And that exists?
The official survey from the Warner. Another one we still haven't...
So it looks like our frontage is...
Good everywhere.
More than adequate.
255? 255, so you're just equal. And that's more than, what is it, acre and a half or something? 6,000 square feet, so...
Three hundred and eighty.
Yeah.
Seven point seventy zero. This is total for lot 2, is thirty four.
Okay. Well, and Allen G's foundation surrounds you, huh?
On two sides.
On two sides. That's the hill, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, goes up to the river.
All right, we have a good locus, and it says that endorsement of the A&R plan does not certify that the lot shown on the plan qualifies as building lots, so that's a whole other thing, and they probably will, but we don't, we're not signing to that. Any questions?
None.
I'd like to make a motion to endorse the plan as submitted.
I'll second the motion. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain?
If it's important to you, I do have, I'm one of the owners, my brother and his children, other owners, I do have signed signature pages for the A&R application, for all of them, if it matters to you.
So, are you saying this is in A&R, APR?
No.
Oh.
I said I have, I have signature pages for all the owners.
Oh, I see.
If it matters to you. I bet this done before, and nobody cares.
All entities listed on D-Bus sign, so yeah, I guess we gotta...
Let me give you the...
Get them picked up in the, uh, in the office.
Eleven six twenty seven.
We add these two pages to, but I said that the other day, you have signatures from everybody, from the owners.
Oh, great, excellent. They're out of town, isn't she?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, and then, um, and then $200, yeah.
You have the mylar, John?
Yeah, here it comes.
Hey, I just sent you the, uh, love, quote, signature's down there.
Oh, you didn't, uh, anything?
No, I didn't, nor what line you picked, so...
Just get it here, and then we'll come back around.
You through the town of Deerfield, like, all checks?
You don't have to tell us, but should we look for these for, uh, go on sale soon, or?
Uh, they're on sale.
Oh, okay.
I spent a year and a half working with the Franklin Land Trust, trying to conserve all farm.
Oh, good.
But they were so busy fighting the oil pipeline, they didn't work very hard on my project. Because that's my theory. So I had to give up on that, unfortunately.
Yeah.
I tried with them, too.
You can still do it on some of your property, though? You think you'll still try it on your property?
What?
To get, get it in the land trust?
Well, the, uh, the, the important property on there, that borders the river, is in an APR, so...
Oh, good.
That, that's the really valuable piece.
Yeah. And none of this was in any other chapter of 61 or anything, was it?
It was, but all of that's been resolved.
Oh, okay.
Give notes, he was here when we did some of that.
We'll give you mylar, one of our signed copies, and, uh...
Thank you.
Three is all, yeah. Thank you.
Is this mine?
That's yours.
Those two are you, that's mylar that goes to...
That was painless, wasn't it?
That was good.
Deerfield did a pretty efficient job.
Well, Dan finally did it, I just saw him at the gym earlier, I was wondering why he's not here, but he did such a good job, I guess Dan honored him to come.
Yeah.
Bring him in with, uh, with his questions.
I've been spending time in Deerfield before the candy kitchen existed.
Wow.
It's a benchmark, I suppose.
When did that stop, I don't know?
Well, since I always remember the candy kitchen, so that's...
It's gonna be there 60 years.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think I was the fifth customer after they opened the house.
Serious?
Been a customer ever since.
All right, thank you so much.
Have a great night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Oh, boy.
Nope, keeping you up tonight, huh?
So we have...
I don't know.
So the solar project, I think I actually put that on there, because I think everybody was informed, there was a Conservation Commission scheduled a meeting, uh, well, the applicant asked the Conservation Commission to, um, to come look at the site and declare that it was, they've done everything they were supposed to do, uh, for those solar panels up on River Road, behind, you know, the Warner property there. And so I, I went up there, uh, with Steve Barrett and another member of the Concom.
This is the TruStone one?
Yeah, I still call it Warner Brothers, but it's called TruStone.
Yeah, so I'll be recusing any...
Yeah, this is just an update, this isn't, they're not gonna vote on anything, it's, uh, so, and I think I've mentioned this in the past, but basically, almost every week, I'm, I'm on an email list, as some of you are, I think, it's called the Deerfield Solar Construction Status Inspection Storm Report. And so Ryan Joyce, who's the inspector, who's working, submitted, he submits this to the Deerfield Concom Conservation Commission, and he gives us pictures of what the site looks like, how the grasses are coming along, and what erosion is happening, and what erosion controls they have. And he, he writes a little paragraph, and he tells us what actions have been taken. Um, so, for the most part, it was going pretty well, there was a lot of times during the early stages when it, when it, when there was a storm and there was runoff, that sometimes water was going over some of the barriers, and you would ask them to fix it, and then be a little washed out, but that was when they were doing construction. Now, now they've finished construction, all the panels are up, um, it's not live yet, they haven't plugged it in yet, or whatever you call that, but it's, it's, they're not gonna do any more construction, and, uh, the grasses have taken hold, and, uh, the ponds are there, the basins are there where they're supposed to be, and it, it looked pretty good, so, um, so I think the Concom, either they're, maybe they had a meeting in the past week or two, I don't know, but they were probably gonna say that it's done, and so they can, uh, move forward with the next step. I, I was gonna ask our building inspector, what, we put some conditions on this also, but basically, I think our conditions followed the Concom, because we had nothing, really no separate planning board issues.
We just had some screening off of Keats Road, right?
Yep, there was, uh, some screening, and they, and I could tell you from being, you know, living up in that area, that you don't know it's there.
You don't hear the electrons moving.
You don't hear them, you know, they haven't...
Why is your hair sticking straight up, though?
They, uh, they haven't, you know, turned on the inverters yet, but it, basically, and the way he said it is, they only, they, they make very little noise, and the only noise they make is when the sun's out, so it's not when you're sleeping. Um, there is some, there is some trees still on the Keats roadside, so you really can't see it, and, uh, they have chain-linked fence around the whole thing, so the, uh, Becum Dock Ridge Blue Dot Trail had to be diverted, because it went right through there, and I don't know, actually, what's going on with that, but that was going across private property, so, there's not a lot to do about that, anyway. Um, so, so it's, it's, uh, seems pretty good. The escrow we had talked about, I don't know if to get, do you remember if we asked for something or not? I wanna double check.
I think we were also gonna do a pilot project on it, right?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that we did, I think that the pilot program is in place and ready to go.
So we'll get the taxes from them, and, you know. And, you know, again, most people say that at the end of the day, if they do turn this thing off, scrap metal people are gonna want it, so it's not gonna be sitting there forever.
Right.
You know, it's coming worth something, anyway, so, so that's really all.
Oh, my pen?
Yeah.
Am I keeping you up?
You didn't think it was my, like, tongue making the noise in the back?
No. Wasn't the solar panels, right?
So, um, so that's really all I wanted to give, is an update, you know, and we spent a lot of time on that project, and, uh, you know, from, from my point of view, it's, uh, you know, I think it's, it's what it is, you know, they, they took down some trees, I know some people didn't like, but it's...
John says it's okay.
It's what it is, it's, I didn't say it was okay, it is what it is. And hopefully, uh, I, I don't know if the town of Deerfield ended up getting in on, on buying that electricity.
We did.
You did, yeah?
We did.
So that's a good thing, I know Amherst was gonna, was one of their first takers, I think.
With the discount that we get off of our already, um, discounted, um, electric rate, I think that we're going to save about, we're gonna save 12% on 20% of our power, if that makes sense.
All right. We know every, we know the accounts, so, okay.
Yep.
And then we also get taxes from it, property taxes, so...
Well, we get a payment, yeah. Yep, and I believe that was just shy of $70,000 a year. Yep.
So, you know, some good things came of it, and hopefully, we're gonna save some possible, so, so that's my update on that. If you have any questions, or, you know, follow up with the Concom, too. Uh, the other update is, uh, Ideal Storage, um, has a couple, uh, changes to their, uh, plans, apparently. But no one's here from there, but let's see if it's self-explanatory. I'm looking to see if you notice anything on there, let me look in here, if there's any paperwork about it.
On what page?
Well, that's a good question.
Unless I had something to compare it to, I really wouldn't know if there was anything different.
As agreed by engineer, updated plans. So I'm not sure if, if, I, I wondered if it's what we voted on, he was gonna add something, but we still, we said yes, just send us the updated plans when you get them. That's, that kinda sounds a little familiar to me, let me, let's see if we got any minutes on that. Do we have a, uh, this should've been probably two or three months ago, you think we approved this?
Well, if you open it up, it's probably stamped in that little right corner, same.
It says no updates, but I don't know if it changes work.
Yeah.
There's no cover letter or anything to, to say what was updated?
It's just a little grating, but it's fairly flat, I think, as I remember it, there's no, there's no, uh...
Well, number is just 247. All right, so we approved it on, uh, August 15th. So then August 15th?
These, these updated plans say October 10th.
Oh, okay, so that's, so there, there was some update, 'cause the last one was on the 15th.
We don't know what it was.
Here, it looks like photometric diag- diagram was missing. So Pat Smith helped us with this, and this, so I have this final report, so I'll send this, I'll, I'll make sure she gets a copy of this, and it's whatever updates we expected if we, we get.
Were those the August 15th, were those the minutes we don't have yet?
This whole locus still has a drive-in period there. Has the one, drive-in period.
What's plan? I remember as a kid, my folks took us to movies, I was a kid, Freebie and the Bean, I don't remember what it was about, but I guess it was not a kids' movie.
I actually remember seeing that there, too.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll go back and just double check it, but, yeah, I don't see the minutes to the August, so...
Yeah, I think those are the ones we don't have.
All right, so, follow up on that, put it here. Sorry if I rolled them up? Yep. All right, let's go to, um...
Hi, Wendy.
Oh, beautiful, perfect timing. So, we got a, uh, this is the, on our new business MVP grant, we got a letter from UMass, and we wanna have a discussion with our town administrator, and there she is, Wendy Foxman, how are you?
Okay. Now, I've sent you information, I sent all of you an, an email about this grant.
So I think... I'm looking for signs of recognition. I agree. Okay. And you've heard about it, you've heard the discussion at the SLU board meetings as well.
So the reason why you got the letter from UMass is because this, uh, program, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, um, was modeled after another state's program, to engage the public in this planning activity, um, and core people within town government. That's, uh, to address vulnerabilities, most environmental vulnerabilities. A lot of that work, we, the town has done, I think I said that in my email, um, there were all hazards planning and other actions. Um, uh, they, the money they awarded, $15,000 to us, I think both, um, Conway and Asheville were awarded $10,000, and there's some other communities, I think there were 67 across the state. Um, we were debating about whether to apply, because we have done so much work, we're sort of ahead of the curve on a lot of the work that they're asking for to be done here, so, but what we really like is the certification that comes at the end of the process, which would put us in a, a, um, a good position to get awards, to do some of the work, um, like culverts and other things that, you know, would be, uh, mitigation activities against problems. Um, so, but what we don't have is integrating the climate data, and that, some of that information is new, and we'll be getting that from the state. The reason why you got the email is that part of this project, part of what the state has done is, um, train, uh, basically anybody who's a planner, or who is interested, met, met a couple of, um, benchmarks, but they trained, I don't know how many people, 200 organizations and people across the street, and that, I've been getting bombarded with, and that's what you got from UMass, I might've heard from them as well, um, from entities that wanna be the facilitator, work with the town. FERCOG wanted to work with us. Uh, but we were approached by Chris Curtis, who Carolyn knows and I know, I don't know if any of you know, who lives here in town, sat here for a while, and I know him over decades, he was the senior planner at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and he works with some other local people, um, who you might know, um, Pete Westover, does a lot of work with farms, and, anyway, retired as a longtime conservation, um, agent for the town of Amherst. Anyway, they were, I, we thought they were a good match, we being, me and Carolyn, who's, who was most interested in this. So, um, we're working with them, and we'll roll out something in terms of a meeting with, um, whoever's interested, actually, I mean, we, we'll, we have to have sort of a core group of designated people, um, like the fire chief, the fire chiefs, um, um, public work superintendent, those that are, that tend to these kinds of things. So, um, I don't know what else to tell you, and I think we were looking at a date of January 24th for a, um, all-day meeting, but I will know more as we continue the conversation with the consultant who will be designing that. I'll ask, I'll answer questions if you have them. I still have some as well, but do my best.
So is, I, I guess one thing is, is there any particular role for the planning board in this, I mean, it sounds like it's a planning activity, so it's, we know about it.
Right.
Is there anything we can do, at meetings, or?
Um, well, I think attend, and I think as we start looking at the data, um, just, I'll, I'll keep you in the communication loop, and you can choose to participate either as individuals, or if you see that there's a role for you to play, um, at a particular, you know, around a particular topic. Um, so, um, there, you know, it sounds like something would be on your plate, and, um, you know, I think that depends on the board itself, and how much you wanna be involved in things beyond, you know, the kind of things the planning boards have to be involved with.
Yeah, I mean, I guess one thing is if, if there are, if out of this comes any recommendations about changing bylaws and things like that, I mean, obviously...
Yes.
You know, we can talk about water issues, we deal with water issues all the time, so, um, if that comes up. But I think I mentioned in email to you is that this could be the kind of thing, that I just have on our agenda, and just update the public, ourselves and the public, since, I don't know how many... and just update the public, ourselves and the public, since I don't know how many boards and committees are on television, but, you know, just because it is, it's a good way to get the public, because a lot of people aren't going to come to these meetings.
Right.
We know that. But it's good to update people that these things are going on, because if there was some kind of flood or problem, people say, hey, have you been doing anything about it? And we could say yes.
Well, if you would like to designate somebody as the representative from the planning board to this project, that might be a way to go.
Do you know more about it?
You could do it, John.
Max or Rachel.
She's not here, so it might as well be-
That's Max or Rachel.
Well, I guess that's what I'm avoiding in saying that we need a designate, just updates.
Yeah.
And how to get those updates is one of the things we need to figure out in town, I think, is, it's kind of hit or miss. But that comes to maybe one of our next points.
I will make a note to make sure that you are informed as things proceed every step of the way.
And just even CC, a couple of us on the emails, and then I can just read an email or two at a meeting occasionally, I think, just to keep people up to date. And then my other quick question is, how you select consultants? Is that all, was there any requirements on this?
They gave us a whole list of people, and we were, I was approached by others, and Chris was about the first person, and Carolyn knew. And she got, we both were excited about working with Chris.
Right, I'm just not sure if there's any formal, you need three quotes, you got to interview, take a low bidder?
No, 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 anything where the, you're working with, and this is a good example. You get a state grant, they pre-qualify people, they take, these are the people you have to work with. You get your choice. And FERCOG really wanted to work with us, and I had long conversations with them about wanting to continue the all-hazards planning with them and integrating that in, but they were trying to make it cost-effective for those really small towns that have no resources to utilize their, it's a long story, but we didn't need to do that. So we thought it might be useful to use multiple consulting sources, the FERCOG and the folks with the Conservation Works Group, so.
Any other questions about that? Thanks. While you're sitting here-
Yes.
Can we talk about-
The proposed job?
Discuss staffing needs of the planning board, which we have discussed, and we're told we're going to move forward, and now you've made some great progress, so you want to update us on that?
Okay, well, I did talk, I don't know if I had, I don't believe I had a proposed job description in front of you last time. I happened to be in the building and you asked me to talk about stuff. So I talked about that there seems to be a lot of interest. I've yet to encounter anyone who doesn't think this is a good idea to create a part-time position, the hour is yet to be determined, of a planning and economic development director. To both, sort of, two pieces of the job are providing expert technical assistance and administrative as well to our land use boards, and integrating the work among the boards and enforcement staff, and health, Board of Health and Health Agent as well. DEDIC has an interest also in, in working with, having someone to work with as well. And the other piece is to work on economic development activities. I have a whole lot of projects on my plate that would, I see as would be ideal kinds of things for this position to handle. I'm very interested in those, I'm very supportive of those, but there's only one of me. And I would love to have a partner to work with on these things, so we can move things forward. We have a lot of things the town has been talking about, plans, big events, engaging lots of people, and then implementation doesn't happen. It would be nice to take a lot of ideas, a lot of effort people have put into thinking about things, and moving them forward. So I think this, this would be helpful. And the goal of, the other integrated goal of this is to create economic development opportunities to grow the tax base and diversify it, and reduce the tax burden on the residential sector of the community. That's, those are grandiose plans, but I think they can be accomplished. And do things in an integrated way, and, you know, have Deerfield have better partnerships with other agencies such as yours, and the state agencies, et cetera, for bringing in grant funds and other kinds of resources. Moving the housing issues along as well, not just, you know, commercial and industrial development, but housing as well.
So there's a, I think the email, I think everybody got job, the draft job description email, there's a copy here. So in summary, the adminis, this person would do administrative and technical work to create, prioritize, implement, and supervise community development, regulatory and planning activities for the town, all other related work as required, and report to the town administrator. So one question we've had here is, what would be their more, you know, direct connection to us, the planning board? Would they help prepare the meet, for the meetings, take, be responsible for minutes even?
I think that's to be worked out. He's, I think, it depends on how many hours there are, but then we'd have a professional staff person to make sure that we were doing things professionally. So yes, it would get worked out.
So that's, one thing is just, I know we could use help just preparing, so we're efficient when we're here, and then following up with minutes, even if they don't have here to take the minutes, I think as long as they were available afterwards.
I don't think their goal is not going to be that type of resource. It's going to be more of Joe Smith comes out of the woodwork and he wants to put in a housing plan, the development. This person will guide the applicant through the process, so it isn't this one first, that one second. And it's going, they're going to be more of a directive to all of the boards as well. So, you know, I know that with my tenure on this board, it's been, well, should we do something, or do we got to hear from Con comment? And it's to eliminate all of that and to go forward. And so, instead of having an applicant deal with their engineer, a towns engineer, Pat Smith, this person can coordinate everything and bring it to the planning board, say, this is it, they've met this, this, and this. Now it's up to you guys to do your job, or whatever. And I think it would be beneficial to both, you know, this board and other boards, but also the applicants and the community as a whole. It takes a lot of the guesswork out, because there doesn't, there's never been any one person that steps up and says, you know, this is okay here, and it's okay here, and it's not okay there, so, you know, I think that would be, and that's why I liked her job description, is that, you know, we're not just going to hire Uncle Joe because he needs a job.
No, this is going to be professional.
Actually, my Uncle Joe's quite interesting.
So if you see any comment, I sent back some, just some quick edits and comments.
Yes, I integrated it.
Priscilla, I know Priscilla looked at it too, so, so that's terrific.
And actually, what happened is that, you know, when I do this late night emailing, I'm exhausted, and I say, ugh, that wasn't the one I meant to send. So some of the comments that you sent were, yeah, like, it's not the town a sandwich where.
And, and just to clarify, we had talked about this, to pay for this is a, you know, I think we'll see savings in some ways right away. That potentially some of it comes from FERCOG contract, that we might not have to hire out, we might not need that, that's technical review right away.
Yes, and I've already talked about this.
And then hopefully it increases the tax base and brings in more businesses.
And if DEDIC wants to share this in some small way, there could be some contribution there.
So I don't think it's a, it's a money issue. I think it can really help the town and not-
Yeah, I think that, I think Kip said it well, but just to add to that, I think the goal, or the duties for this person will enhance your effectiveness as volunteers.
Yes.
And so you will have that resource available to you, and you can just make those policy decisions.
And it's true, because we are volunteers, and that a lot of times, you know, you've got to kind of really scratch your head and think about things where it'd be nice to have somebody that we know is on the community side to say, yes, this is the way it is, and, and take that burden off of us.
So we'll have them read these things first and find out. Excellent, thanks. So that's, the timeline is, just put this out there for soon?
We need to talk about that more, I think, in the select board finance committee level. This is something we want to do, try to make happen before annual town meeting or special town meeting. It's somewhat moved along because of the building commissioners' transition to health agent, because for quite a while now, Dick Kalashewski's been the main point person for businesses, others coming, you know, interested in town. And he has the familiarity, the other, the assistant building commissioner, who will be moving into that position, knows a lot, but not as fully acquainted with the town and, you know, all of that. Of course, a new person in this position will have to learn.
Yeah.
But at least they will have the skills as a trained planner to, having had experience elsewhere, kind of know how things get done. And then learning how Deerfield does, and integrate all of that, so.
Good, we look forward to it. Can we keep you here for another couple minutes? We're going in, we're going to talk about our budget items for, which I think, well, actually, this is, this is very well in advance, right? This is further ahead than I think we usually get emails about budgeting. But just to remind people, we requested a lot less this past year because we had not used some of the other, and because we have the revolving revenue account. And so I just got a, planning board for this fiscal year, we've expended $3,800 out of the $75,000. We're still in, we're still in 17, right?
No, we're in 18.
No, we're in 18.
Yeah, we're in 18.
That's, that's the budget, that doesn't even have a, alright, so actually, that's what maybe I can ask for next, is what we have. I thought this had what we did spend. I think this is just the budget.
And that's primarily going to FERCOG, or ads and?
Yeah, Planner Services, $5,000, and then $6,000. Yeah, because most of the, other things come out of fees and stuff, so. So anyway, at this point, I'm sure we're going to be able to keep our budget requests rolling. But I'll get an update on what it is, you know, this mail and a few other things, but there's not a lot.
It's been, these first few months have been a lot slower than your last previous.
Well, that's, that's true too, but a lot of that was paid for by the applicants.
Right, right.
You know, any kind of those technical reviews get paid for by the applicants.
I'm real, I'm also hoping, and I'm a big proponent of this, as you know, that we will, the planner will also help to provide more training and updating our boards and committees with what you need to know to make the right decision. So, I'm warning you now, you might not, you might have to, you might be, you will be expected to come to meetings beyond just meetings where you've got an application. You know, most boards, at least the boards that I've worked with in other communities, meet when you don't have that kind of business. You know, just to talk about, you know, where are we going, we want to take a look at this bylaw, have a speaker come in, and we've had a number of issues with this, why don't we, we could host one of the citizen planner trainings here. FERCOG has one coming up, or they just had one.
We actually talked about that last meeting, and some people were going to go to some of them, I think. I'm not sure we did though. They have one coming up in Greenfield.
Right, right. I think it's, wasn't it zoning bylaws?
Yeah.
Rights and responsibilities, or something like that. It's both for planning boards and CBAs. It's a good one. It's a good refresher course.
Alright, thank you. Anything else for us?
Do you want me to see if I have the updated report, or you're-
No, and again, this is, we're way ahead of time, I think, so next meeting, I'm sure we'll be fine to get our what we spent.
Too far, because we're going to be looking at the budget in December anyways.
Initial budget submissions are due no later than December 22, so let's get this on our agenda for next December, first week of December. And I'll have, I'll get, you know, how much was spent this year, to help us plan for next year.
Wendy, what is your timeframe for bringing on this?
Well, I was just going to, John asked me that, and I said, you know, I'm kind of looking for direction. We haven't talked about it at the board very much, and as I said, it's somewhat fueled a little bit by Dick's transition, as frankly, the sooner we could do it, I think it would be great, but I turn to you all to express your interest in that.
Well, my interest is quite strong, and, you know, I know that Carolyn and Trevor and I have all, you know, spoken to you about this, and that, you know, we, we want to go forward with it. I mean, it's not a rush, rush thing, we don't have to hire somebody next month, but it'd be good to get that hat out there, let it be known that we're looking, and we could start interviewing people. But I, I think that as, as important as it is to have a planner to help this, they have to be a good match for our community too.
Exactly.
You know, there's a lot of people that do a variety of different things, but, you know, if an individual isn't a good match for our community, you know, it could be a problem, you know.
Well, I think about that every hire we do here in town. So the, really, I think the question, we had personnel earlier, and they have it to look at as well. It would have to go through them to approve the, you know, to, to look at and recommend to the select board, the job description, the grade level on the compensation plan, that kind of thing, so. But the, we don't know when we're going to have a special town meeting. We've been looking at maybe February? Or maybe it'll be April at the annual town meeting that we do this, but that's, in terms of answering your question, that could be a timeline if people felt like they wanted to move that along more quickly.
So we want us to go to town meeting?
Funding. We don't have funding for it, so we need to appropriate money. It's not unnecessary or unforeseen. Well, maybe it is. So we can't, it would, does not make sense to any other way to fund this, but to have to go to town meeting for it. What, do you have another idea? I, I'm willing to hear it.
Well, I don't know, we save, we're saving money here and there, and we're going to bring in money over here and there.
It doesn't quite work out well.
It's not, not enough.
Yeah, well, I guess the reason I-
I mean, we can still say that.
Well, definitely, if, if we're looking to spend, you know, say $50,000, but on the planning board, then we're going to save $8,000, and on, you know, town, you know, other officer, we're going to save five or $6,000, and from the building department, we're going to save five or $6,000. So, you know, we might not have to come up with an additional $50,000 at town meeting. It might only have to be $30,000, because the other money's going to come from other areas, yeah.
But you still have to-
Well, looking at number seven on the agenda, you know, affordable senior housing, I mean, how many years have we talked about this? And it probably never will happen without the help from a planner.
You need someone to make it.
So that, that's-
It's, but this is, I feel, this is why I feel it's real strong, strongly to get the right person, because you can't just have a planner and an economic developer without having that person sensitive to the rural community that we all love and share. And, you know, they could do a bang-up job about attracting all this, and we're like, wait, 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 you know, we don't, this isn't what we want, you know, this isn't what the, you know, so that's why it has to be a very, I don't know, I just think it has to be the right person.
I understand.
It's a difficult thing. And as far as the affordable housing goes, you know, I, I still think the town is a, I don't even know, when I say the town, I don't know, who do I mean? But this is never, almost never going to happen, Deerfield doing it on their own. They're going to have to have a partner of some sort. They're going to have to, you know, either have a private developer or some sort of a state agency, I don't know, what is it Franklin County Regional Housing Authority? Is that a quasi-state agency or something like that?
It's a regional housing authority.
Housing, that's the type of group or private individual that we're going to need, because the town of Deerfield will never be able to do it.
But that's, but that is what a planner would do. I'm trying to do this now. Like I spent three hours with someone from Mass Development, and they have many, many programs that we could, it'd be interesting to take advantage of them. I walked around, showed them, well, we're thinking of doing this here, and housing there, and downtown, and blah, 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 and that is what this person would do, is pull those resources together. It wouldn't necessarily be the town creating the housing, but at least they would know, you know, where, how to find a developer, or get someone interested, or, you know, where the resources are to make it affordable, and, you know, make it affordable for a developer. resources are to make it affordable and, you know, make it affordable for a developer to develop it, whether that be an agency or a private developer. But yes, I don't think we're, the town is interested in becoming, you know, having our own housing authority.
Just this past week, Greenfield grew ground, and it was Greenfield's property, the town's property, that they, I think, just have a developer doing seven units, you know, so you can, but it took a lot of planning, and they have a planning department that helped do that.
I think, I got to be frank, I think that even if that happened, if a guy came in and wanted to put in seven, you know, low-income, you know, buildings that had four to six units, he would have a difficult time with this board. And that's, we have to, I don't know how, if it's, we have to adjust our mindset or just relinquish the fact that if we want this, we're going to have to change our ways. Am I being clear enough? No, I'm trying to be, not try to be vague, but, you know...
I guess this is where I've never completely understood, what it is you think, we have bylaws, and if someone comes in and wants to follow the bylaws and build something, we approve it, which we've done over and over again.
I know. But the most recently, housing development that went through, did go through, it was, it was quite painstaking, you know, and, you know, and that was following all the rules. So if somebody wanted to come in and say, if they just say, look, this isn't going to work with two, I need to put six units in every building, you know, well, it doesn't follow our rules, so you can't, you know, that's what I'm saying, we have to be flexible, and we have to think about it consciously beforehand to say, okay, you know, where can we change and amend things without opening up the whole town, you know? And then on the flip side of that, we have to be quite fair to any and all comers, you know, you just can't say, all right, I'm going to let this guy do it over here because I don't care about that parcel of land where, you know, somebody on the other side of town might have something that is better, you know, so when you pick and choose where you can do stuff, I mean...
Well, and that's what zoning does.
Well, it, right, but when you talk about residential, you know, it's kind of like the whole town is really residential. So, you know, some areas might be more practical for senior housing than other locations. I, for one, think any, anything close to downtown, it makes it very, you know, inviting for elderly people because they can walk to stores, you know, they, there's a lot more sidewalks and things for them to, you know, just walk on.
Not that great.
Church and...
Well, they can trip over them.
That's high on the list.
What's that?
It's high on the list to get the, especially on...
Yeah, they're terrible. You're walking on, love it. The sidewalk for the center of the town. So we talked about affordable housing.
I know.
That's it. We checked it out. Nice.
Well, that's another thing...
But that's the only point I was trying to make is...
This person's going to help.
Yes, exactly. That's the only thing.
I also see the person reading through all our, you know, related bylaws and regulations and identifying, and hearing from you all, you know, and as well as the building department, where the, and the, and ZBA, whatever, CONCON, where there have been problems, you know, that they're, they need to be loosened up or tightened up or whatever, you know, what do you want? By the way, that reference, was it you that asked about the master plan reference or the, that's the new term for master plans, I guess.
Local comprehensive plan?
Yeah. And I don't know when the town last did a master plan. It's been a long time, hasn't it? You know, there's reluctance to do those things because they're huge, and it's a lot of time and effort, and then what happens? So the only thing I'm aware of that needs to be kept updated, well, two things. One is our all hazards plan in order to get money to deal with hazardous situations, road complete, redoing roads, a bridge, whatever, and the open space plan, which is a prerequisite for many grants. So I don't know where the master plan stands anymore, but in terms of whether communities undertake them. It's been a while since I've seen that.
If we have to redo the open space plan, there's only thirty-eight people did the last one, so it shouldn't be that difficult to get it done.
That's higher than most towns. So...
Actually, at the Franklin Planning Meeting last Thursday, there was a woman from Boston that approved the, what was her name, Michelle maybe, or, but she was there doing...
Approves the open space plans?
Yeah.
Uh-huh. I actually had in the job description that the person would be a representative to the Franklin County Planning Board. Do we have one or two reps, do you know?
Right now, just one. I've been for a few, few years.
Okay, because I thought there was like two positions available to town, so I was imagining that they could be the backup person, just like I seem to be that now for the Franklin Regional Council of Government's council, so, so we're represented, we need to be. So thanks for going to those meetings.
Yeah, you're good at it, and you like some of the stuff they talk about, so...
Yeah, a lot of it's repetitive, but, you know, well, actually, I should bring up, you know, since we, any other business, you sent out the email about the recreational marijuana. Pretty much Peggy was just saying, make sure the towns have their i's dotted and a t's crossed because, you know, it's coming, and, or do, has the select, has the select board talked about the local tax on it? Okay.
What happened with that building?
It's up to three percent.
Yep. We know that we need to actually go to, to have a town meeting vote to, for the tax for any kind of additional zoning bylaw we might want to do. What was the third thing? Oh, if you want to set a cap on the number. We need to make those decisions.
Right, and that's what Peggy was...
So if you notice, towns are doing moratoriums, it's such a wild kind of situation with the, anything can almost happen before the regulations come out from the new board that was set up to oversee everything. So the recommendation is that towns have a moratorium, not to stop things unless that town wants to, but to give you the time to repair and make the right decisions.
Well, that's, I think the townships, without anything on the books, that's what they're doing, to see what the final regulations are going to be. I guess in Beacon Hill, it's been going back and forth, you know, as far as the final law goes.
Well, the law's in place. The laws, they've finally finalized that, but what is, what we're waiting for are regulations coming out of a board that was just situated.
The regulations.
Yeah, and that's going to, we don't know what that's going to say, and everybody's hosting meetings and trainings, and everybody come, the speakers come and say, I don't know, because it's really brave new world, we're not really sure what's going to happen. But this is the best advice that we're getting, is that we should have a town meeting to either have a moratorium till we have the real time involved to look more closely at some zoning issues around this, in addition to what the town is already, we're ahead of a lot of other towns, as you know, because you've prepared for medicinal marijuana and with zoning. But the tax, if we don't adopt that, we could lose that opportunity, so we need to do that.
Exactly. And one thing of interest, when the law was being sold to the voters in the state, there was a lot of talk of education and, and, you know, rehabilitation, but none of that state tax is earmarked for any of that, it's all going straight into the general fund. So that was a little bit deceptive.
Just to go along with that, the state of Massachusetts currently gets eight-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars a year from big tobacco companies, and they spend one-point-two million on prevention, like, all of that money was supposed to go to prevention.
That was in the law that was passed, and it's been diverted over the...
It's not as if they, they didn't really do a bait and switch, but it was sort of sold that this is what's going to happen with the money.
There was a regulation that had it.
Right. So it's going straight to the general fund.
But the medical marijuana, it was like a percentage of their gross income was supposed to come to the town, and we created an overlay district, but I think at last town meeting, there was, all that money was going to be earmarked for EMS or the police department, and I was under impression that it was going to go to the general fund and help all of us. And I was under impression that it wasn't going to create that many situations in the community that we needed to put all that money into those two organizations. So I don't know if the community really wants it.
Well, I think what we were, I think what we were told and what actually was written were two entirely different things.
But also, just so you guys know, that I read in that contract, it wasn't of the gross sales, it was a percentage of their profit. And when I read that, it just kind of like, what?
Nonprofit.
Because you can, you can have a million dollars in sales and not make a penny in profit.
Right, if the CEO is making three million dollars a year.
Exactly, so, you know...
But you're right, they're supposed to be set up as nonprofits.
Yeah.
So I...
Right. But it wasn't going to be a big impact on any of our agencies, and all of a sudden it's getting earmarked for these two things, and they said, well, they'd like to have it maybe where it'd be easier to keep an eye on it and stuff, but then all that money wasn't going to even help you or me or anybody in the community?
Well, there's been no money. They never opened. We're, we're taking a look at redoing our, that's our host agreement with the organization.
Is that project gone down the road, the one that was on the, down by the final markdown? Did that fall through or something?
We're working, we're continuing to work with them. We'll see.
Oh.
We'll see. We're really moving, we're going to see shortly whether that's going to happen. It's been a while.
No, I've got questions about it. It wasn't presented, when they were presenting us to create an overlay district, it wasn't presented in the manner they're going to use that, the income to the town there, and there was a big debate at town meeting about it.
This year, you mean, or previously?
Yes.
Yeah, because it had been in a revolving fund, the money, and it's not, it's not anymore.
They're not going to make the same mistakes that they made in Colorado and Washington.
I don't know. I don't know what the mistakes were there.
I think they're...
I think the town, I think the leaders want to be responsible about this and do the right thing and take care of the community, so we're staying on top of, you know, we're watching what other communities are doing and, you know, staying informed. So I'm help, I'm really hoping I can help that effort, so...
So I guess my question is, should we have it on our agenda for to consider location and type of recreational marijuana uses that your community would allow or...
Couldn't hurt to put it on your agenda.
It says municipal officials, particularly planning boards, will likely want to conduct planning and outreach as soon as possible to determine the types of uses residents and businesses support, as well as suitable locations.
What's that from?
That's from the FERC that said...
Well, which we already have.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking. We've already got that.
We've done pretty extensively before. I don't know if we can regulate, but one of the things that, I mean, I've made it perfectly clear, this whole marijuana thing bothers me anyways, but what bothers me even more, it's one thing to know that there's marijuana there and I'm not going to touch it, but it's another thing to know that they can put it into food that might be sold, and, you know, I, I would have no way of knowing that, you know, and so if we have the ability to regulate the marijuana being in production of any food or anything like that, that's something that, you know, I would, you know, want to stay right on top of. I don't know if we have that ability.
Well, that's what I think the regs will address, and I think they're having hearings, and they're taking input, and I think it's important to do that, and that's perhaps the kind of thing you would bring up.
Well, can we as a township, although we have the, the medical and by default will be recreational by the sounds of it, do we have...
It could be both, you know. It could be, there will still, people are assuming and expecting that there will continue to be a medicinal market as well. You know, a lot of people thought, well, that's the end of that, and now we're just moving into the retail adult use time, but there's still a market, because there are a lot of people who, who have prescriptions for medicinal marijuana, and that's what they want to get. They don't want to go to a retail store and buy it, but anyway, I'm sorry.
Locally, do the voters have the option of saying, like Kip just said, we don't want edibles in town? Can that be a local decision, or is it...
I'm not aware, I've never heard that discussed, so I either know, from, I'm guessing, no, or we'll see what the regulations address, but I'm, I'm thinking they might be able to, yeah, you know, we don't know yet.
One of the things that I do know, since we're talking about this, is that the Department of Public Health has definitely made it clear that smoking marijuana falls into the same category as smoking tobacco, so that you can't, like in Deerfield, we have no public smoking, so you can't consume, you know, pot in public the same way. You know, whether or not we choose to allow a pot bar, say, where people can go in and just sit and smoke.
Cafes, they're calling it.
You know, but then, because Board of Health, we still, you know, you can't, can't smoke in a workplace environment, so, you know, it, it's even like clubs, you can't smoke in private clubs, so there's a lot of things that we don't necessarily have to be so careful about addressing, but this whole thing about consumption through food is, that's a whole gray area.
Not your favorite thing, I know.
Yeah, I, I just see, I just see huge problems with that. I mean, you know, you take some, a family in town, if they want to make brown cookies or whatever it is, and then their daughter takes them to school, and I think, hey, you want to have a cookie, and it's like, I just...
Well, and that's ultimately what it comes down to, for me, is the youth, that, I mean...
That I think is something they're paying a lot of attention to in the regulations.
That's really for me what it comes down to.
So, again, since you're interested, if I, something comes across my screen about a, the commission having a meeting or a hearing, and there's an opportunity to get public input, I'm happy to keep you aware of that, so...
So our next meeting will be December...
December fourth.
December fourth.
One last quick thing off topic for Wendy or Kip, I got this letter, something, some trust thing for energy savings that gets, I haven't received any follow-up on that.
That's because this is the Energy Save Program through the Greenspoon, and they didn't do the follow-up email they were supposed to do.
So do I just throw the letter away?
Did you get, did you get the photo of the house?
No.
Okay.
That's the part that hasn't been done.
I, I received the letter, said that I was a chosen one, or whatever.
Well, they were able to, to actually...
Oh, St. John?
I'm just, I, it's the curiosity factor right now, I haven't seen it.
Well, what they did, John, just so you know, is that they drove by, they went up and down, I think, all the streets in town, but for some reason their gizmo didn't work everywhere, and they basically had a roof-mounted gizmo on the car, and they took infrared photos of everybody's houses. And with the computer generation that they have, they really can only see three sides of your house, but the computer took a three-dimensional picture of it, and they were supposed to send you a colored photograph showing where all the heat in your house was. It was up to the homeowners to do with that whatever, they were just providing, saying, look, this is where your house is losing heat, and that's all they were going to do.
I brought it up here because I didn't know all the people that would be watching.
I will have the energy committee...
No, how do you get that as a...
They were supposed to send it.
They're talking to people as they run across them, but...
Well, yeah, but I just, if you don't get it, it's nothing.
The way that I read it too, that there might be some cash available for the...
Yep, there's incentives for doing work, and that's...
Okay, with that being said... Quick point of, we talked about the education part, at the FERC on November twenty-ninth is, is a session, roles and responsibilities of planning board and zoning board, and it's right up in Greenfield, this is, the state is doing this, so some of us said we're going to try to go to that. It's the twenty-ninth from six to eight at the FERC, they often have pizza.
Oh, what kind?
Or health. They always have some kind of food.
They just switched to Village.
It's a Wednesday, it's a Wednesday night.
Well, Village is okay.
Well, John sent out an email to everybody about it.
Okay, yeah.
That'd be good for us.
Yeah, it would be great for the ZBA votes, some of, there's some new people to join you.
Get there.
So there's a clarity about who does what.
Can you get to go?
We'll pay your mileage.
Really?
Six miles back and forth.
Okay.
Anything else?
Mail.
I, I, I went through the mail, it's all little things from neighboring towns, it's special, so...
Well, timed out.
Okay, John?
Well, it's nine o'clock.
Is that the right time? Is that, is it nine o'clock?
It's after nine.
Is that the right time?
I'd like to make a motion that, well, our next meeting will be...
December fourth.
December fourth. Did we have a motion here?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
John?
Second to motion.
Well, no, 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 okay, yeah.
All those in favor? Aye, five, nothing.
Okay, five, zero, zero.